I'm going to call this session, work session to order at four oh one P M. In, in what feels like an empty room. After a while, we do have several members that are out for family or medical reasons. Did you say member Bellamy was online? And superintendent is traveling and is here online. And member Donley is not feeling well, and I doubt will be here for the work session. Perhaps for the business section. And our student representative is not here yet, but everyone else is in attendance. So with that, a call to order and roll call. That brings us to section B, our discussion on repurposing. And I'm thinking someone from the administration will step in and talk to us for a while.
Thanks, Mr. President. I hope you can hear me all right.
Can you hear me, Mr. President?
Yes, we can. There might be a little echo. From that.
Oh, okay. I'll try to work on that after I keep Jim up. So first off, thank you for the opportunity to just be remotely today as a complete night, make horse work. Today's work session will focus on the repurposing plan.
We have, the short of it is that we have many more incredible programs in these buildings and A S D than we have vacant facilities. And I do recognize that.
When you. Yes. When you turn or you did something where suddenly your voice became very muffled. So at the beginning it was clear. Something changed.
Okay, my apologies. How about now, Mr. President?
That sounds good.
Okay, my apologies. So the, the short of it is that, you know, I recognize that A S D has many more incredible programs in lease buildings than we have vacant. So, so tonight, the board has a big decision to weigh, and I wanted the opportunity to answer board member questions. And help you think through the pros and cons of the administrative recommendation and also other options that you might be deliberating tonight. So Jim Anderson has a few slides on the relevant data. And then from there, we can answer any questions you might have. So I'll hand it off to Mr. Anderson and the team.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Bryant. So Kirsten and I will be going through some of these slides. It's meant to be discussion format. If, if that's what the board would like to do tonight, just to make sure we can respond to questions. And we all know that later tonight on action item will be a decision. You know, it's, it's clear to everybody in the room. That when we get to these slides, that all four schools that, that people are looking at going into two schools, they're all great schools. But we only have two locations to put them in. And, and so obviously tough, tough call tonight. I did want to just do a, a quick rehash of. The leases that, that people are paying. We do have the ACT program, which we'll talk about in a little while as well. That lease expires at the end of June, and we know we need to find room for that. And, and we'll get a little bit more deeper into that. Families leased, they're working on one year extension or multi-year extension now. And that negotiation is starting. Rikashula at the end of the school year, their lease expires. They're currently not working on. An extension until after the decision is made. And I think everyone understands how difficult it is to get. The best bargain you can when you, you reduce the amount of time you're negotiating. And of course, everything we do here is public. And, and so, you know, all of those things impact when you're trying to do negotiations. So I did want to see, you'll see on these slides, I did put the fund balance that each of the charter schools has. On the next two charts. None of the charter schools, with the exception of Alaska Native Charter School. Has a kitchen facility or cafeteria. Library or gym, Rikashula's. I guess got some, but, but not what they would like. And I'll hand this over to Kirsten to talk about pros and cons we've seen from an administration perspective. And of course, from discussions with board members.
Sure. So when you look at both Rilke and ANCCS, specifically starting with Rilke. In terms of facilities, like Jim said, there's, there's no lunchroom. For Rilke library or gym, which really limits their ability to maneuver in that building and have larger gathering space. And, and their lease does expire at the end of this year. So by moving to Lakewood, some advantages. For Rilke would be to get out from under that lease, which helps them with some financial stability. But it also helps them maintain just a really healthy viable school program by having those extra spaces. And when you look at ANCCS, they do have some access to those facilities currently at Abbott Loop. They are, are also really serving students that live mostly in the east side of town. And so when there are advantages to both schools to moving to Lakewood from a newer facility standpoint. And, and just wanted to kind of point out those, those changes or those advantages, disadvantages for the schools moving to, to Lakewood.
So I, I certainly appreciate that every decision a board member makes is, is not a business related decision. I just wanted to explain why. We recommended Rikashula over ANCCS. And it really was the by far the larger school. That school can hold 500 kids. Rikashula is already at 500. It really did go down to the lease expiring. With a very short period of time to renew the lease. Knowing that this decision had been pushed into March. We're about 11 weeks from the end of school. When we make these decisions tonight. So it, it really was not. A preference of Rikashula over ANCCS. It purely was time, money. And, and a, and really looking at it from a business perspective, but I certainly appreciate that's not the only perspective.
All right. So looking towards Highland and Stream and looking at proposals into Nunaka Valley as a location. Just from a curriculum and instruction standpoint. Highland has room to grow if they're able to move to Nunaka. They would, they, they are one of our charter schools. That needs assistance with financial stability in a big way. They currently don't have outside space, a lunchroom, a true library or gym. So there are some real limitations to the spaces that they work with in their current location. Nunaka would provide those, those spaces for instruction. And one of the big, I would say advantages to. Creating a space for Highland at Nunaka Valley would be really taking care of our ACT program. By moving them into the Highland space that they're currently in. And we'll talk a little bit more specifically about the ACT program later. But the, the other thing that's good for both schools is it is close to their current location. They're both east side schools. Nunaka is also an east side school. If we switch to Stream, one of the big advantages for Stream moving to Nunaka Valley is having greater access to outside spaces. And closeness to Russian Jack as a park. Part of their philosophy for the middle school program at Stream is a lot of experiential learning. They are outside a lot and do a lot of their learning outside of a traditional classroom. So the Nunaka Valley space really does fit the model for Stream in terms of not having to take a bus everywhere or get parents to drive. They're able to walk outside their door and access those outside spaces. It really does provide growth potential for them as well, which is their goal as a charter. And, and I think I mentioned it once before, but it is still close to their current location. So from a transportation perspective, parents would not have a, a far drive to a new location at Nunaka Valley.
So again, we, we were asked to make a recommendation. We did look at both Stream and Highland at this facility. And again, the recommendation, it was really tough. We, we knew that all the green space. Was perfect for Stream. We knew that both schools could grow from their current enrollment to 300. It really came down to. The administration has been watching Highland's fund balance get scary low for multiple years. And, and we looked at this as. Really an, an opportunity for them to do something similar to what ANCCS did. If you looked at the first chart. Their fund balance grew significantly when we moved them into East High School and then into the Abbott Loop facility. Because they put money back every year into the rent account. And it kind of held there and it was done intentionally. And we worked it with them when we pulled them out of, out of. Their building during COVID and moved them to East. Because at that time, there was a lot of public discussion about building a building over at APU or getting a different. Facility and they wanted, they wanted a brand new building. And so that account was created. Where they were always allowed to keep some unallocated, but they really did grow their fund balance up because they weren't paying lease. And so it, it did look like purely again, from a business perspective, that it gave Highland. A better chance at surviving the next several years, not knowing what education funding in the state is going to look like.
So looking ahead, looking at our next talking point around the ACT program. And just for some context, I think most board members are aware, but if there's public tuning in, the ACT program serves. Students with disability, disabilities ages 18 to 21. And, and it is a step between high school graduation and that, that adult transition. And so there's a lot of skills that are taught in that program that include independent living skills. How to maintain a job, lots of job skills. They connect them with job skills. They practice those skills. They also learn how to use public transportation. There's a variety of skills that they learn through the ACT program that help them. Get a leg up essentially into adulthood during that age range of 18 to 21. So when we're looking at needs for the ACT program. We do have many different sites that the ACT program is situated in now. We would like to look at consolidating that into a viable facility. That we can help support the program as a whole, as opposed to having it in multiple locations. So cost efficiency is a big, is a big deal for us when we're looking at ACT program in terms of not paying for a lease. And housing them here in the space that Highland is currently situated in. The other, the other part of moving them to the Highland space is that there's existing infrastructure there. We would not have to do major renovations to accommodate the program. It's pretty much set up for students. And so there would be some minor things that we would have to do, but it would not be a complete overhaul with construction. One thing that is really nice about our east side location here in the Ed Center with Highland right next door to us. Is that we have lots of transportation accessibility. And for a program like ACT, this is a really important feature. Because a big part of the ACT program is utilizing that public transportation system. And not all parts of Anchorage are easily accessible that way through public transportation. We also look at continuity of services. So moving to an, an existing A S D facility assures just stability for. Students and staff. They know where to expect that program. They can come visit that program. It's not changing year to year. That has that stable building that people can, can count on. And instead of leases or other extra spaces that we find to tuck those programs in, but often we have to move when, when other things come in. So the other thing is that it's a flexible space. So. We can, we can use layout of Highland to just adapt to the needs that we have within the ACT program. And this would cause minimal disruption to other schools as a part of the transition as well.
Okay, just add a couple of comments. Knowing that, that we, we didn't know how the vote would turn out. We did look at the Stream facility. And sent a couple of questions back to Wayland. One was, would they allow us to pick up that lease that is currently. Owned by Stream and use it for the ACT program? The second one was, long term, what is Wayland's plan for that building? Because we certainly didn't want to pick up one remaining year, move the whole ACT program into a facility with no. Idea of whether that facility would continue to exist or would continue to be available to us as a long-term programmatic move. The individual in Alaska that is, was allowed and, and managed, has some oversight of the lease with Stream. Unfortunately, doesn't have the decision-making authority to, to respond to that. He has sent that back to Texas where the head corporate headquarters is. And we are pending information. So it isn't that we didn't look at both options. It's that we, we don't have an official response. Are there, are there buses near Wayland? Yes. Can we put kitchens in any facility? Yeah, our, our maintenance department's amazing. Of course we can. But would we put kitchens in a facility? That we may not be able to occupy for more than a year? Probably not. And I just don't know the answer and I, and I apologize. That's what we needed to know to really be able to talk. At program into that facility. And I know there's a couple of board members behind the scenes that certainly were interested in. As soon as we have that information, I'll make that available.
So looking at our next talking point. When, when we originally did the right sizing work and Baxter was on a potential closure list. Nunaka Valley students were slated through that process to go to either Chester Valley or Russian Jack. And in, in the process of right sizing with Baxter coming off of that list. We wanted to reconsider Baxter as a potential location for Nunaka. So we did some background work. We, so both Chief Academic Officer Spang Gustafson and myself and Senior Director Brenda Cheetham visited. The schools, we talked to staff about their opinion of Nunaka Valley as a whole, coming to Baxter as an option. And overwhelmingly, both at Nunaka Valley and at Baxter, staff are enthusiastic about that option. Keeping the Nunaka students together and joining another facility at Baxter. There is room for the entire population of Nunaka to be housed at Baxter. Additionally, we surveyed families from Nunaka Valley about that move and change. And over 80% of our, our staff and families that responded to that student, student or survey, sorry. Are positive in terms of that move and making that change. And so we really feel that we, that the recommendation to move Nunaka to Baxter is a really positive one from the community. Additionally, there is an east side community council meeting where this was brought up. And, and there are community members that are very positive about this move as well.
Number Wes.
Thank you. This is maybe not directly. It's part of this conversation. But one of the questions that I was noodling on. And I just wanted to throw out there. I know that through the conversations member Jacobs and I had with the administration, when the board in the amendment that was approved. Should a $1,000 BSA increase be approved by the legislature? Approximately $4 million would go to charter schools because it would be through the formula and we would be passing their share. And so the question that I had, and this is something I would throw at maybe our CFO. I could give him a heads up. So it's not, not out of left field entirely. Is what does a $1,000 BSA increase do for each of these charter schools? Because I know that it would lift all boats and it would lift these boats in specific ways.
Sure. I'm gonna let Andy go first.
Yeah, thank you. And thanks for the heads up for the question. So with a $1,000 BSA increase, ANCCS would get about 466,000. Highland about 343,000, Rilka about 653,000. And Stream would be about 306,000. And that's just based on what their projected enrollments for next year are.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next.
Remember, sorry.
Just, I've got other questions, but I can wait till the end. But just a quick follow-up then, as someone who's not intimately familiar with. Any of the program budgets that, of the four schools that are involved in this proposal. Will any of the charter programs have a structural deficit to contend with after the legislature passes HB 69 with a $1,000 BSA increase?
Currently, all the charter schools have balanced budgets for next year without the $1,000 BSA increase. Some of them are dipping into their savings to pay for it, but. There shouldn't be an issue with solvency in any of the schools, even at their current rates. They've. They've figured it out. A thousand dollars. I don't know how they'd spend it, but I'm sure it would be welcome.
Could I follow up, Mr. Chair? Just to put a, a, put, put a pin in it then, would any charter program be required to dip into savings? With the additional revenue that they would receive from HB 69 if it included a $1,000 BSA increase?
I don't know that I can answer that because I don't, just like I don't know what our board is going to do. I don't know what their boards would do as far as allocating additional staff. And whether or not they would spend down their savings as well as spending the new money.
I'd like to add that there's a committee substitute in June now that'll hit for House Bill 69, and it'll be on the floor tomorrow. And it does not mention inflation-proofing the BSA. So it's a one-time $1,000 BSA. If the charter schools, like. The rest of the district were to actually use 100% of all available funds. And increase positions as much as they could possibly do, that following year, there would be yet again a massive. Structural deficit because the BSA wouldn't have been inflation-proofed. So. It's a great question, but not knowing what the APCs will prioritize and how much they may save. It would be difficult to know what the long-term impacts of not inflation-proofing. The additional money they would get this year would have. Any more than when we come back with a revised budget. If we literally even could spend all of it and hire everybody. The following year, we would already, we would be back to a 3% deficit again. Unless they inflation-proof. So lots. I, I would certainly advise charter schools not to spend it all tomorrow. And, and to wait and see how this session plays out.
Mr. Chair, just one last follow-up comment?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate, appreciate the answer. And I assumed it might be something close to that. I, I hope that we're moving away from as a state. Assuming. That periods of five to 10 years of legislative inefficacy of addressing the foundation formula will occur. And, and instead we, we position ourselves as assuming that we will continue to. Address the foundation formula in the same way that we increase our Department of Corrections budget on an annual basis. But I understand for some reason that's considered optimistic. It just shouldn't be. Thanks.
So I did bring up, I think it was January, it could have been February, they kind of blended together. I brought up for discussion. That I think it's time for us to put a Wayley design and renovation in the CIP. I didn't really get a lot of feedback. But we saw what happened when one school had. An SBBS program this year and the whole community and the school came out. Not wanting a very small number of children to potentially interrupt their, their daily cycle. It's going to be very difficult to find a new home for Wayley. We still have charter schools we can't find new homes for. And, and I am curious, does the board at least acknowledge that that's a good direction to go? Because I, I think we, we need to do better for those kids at Wayley. If you haven't been there. Please get ahold of Kirsten, Robin, anybody and, and go visit. Those, those kids I think deserve better. And I think it's time to formally move forward to, to try to figure out how to get their educational experience. Improved over what we currently can do. So I don't know if there's comments or. If the board supports that direction.
Member Higgins.
Yeah, I, I, that's an interesting issue as far as Wayley, as Abbott Loop and the like.
Yeah, I I that's an interesting issue as far as Wayley, Abbott Loop, and the like. You know, Bartlett hits me more extreme than any of the schools. It leaks everywhere and the heat and everything else, and their the amount of money they need is massive. I we can add things all we want to it, but until the most critical schools, the ones that are just, in my opinion, not safe in line with, I think Wayley was safe. I mean, the structure is there, physically and all that, there are things they want to do. And there's a lot of space there for the number of kids, so it's not short that way in renovations. But it's not like the facility itself is unstable or where, you know, the the roofing is so bad and the temperature varies, you know, 20, 30 degrees with one wall. So I'm not sure how adding things like at this point in time, until we get to the most, what what are the most critical schools? And rather than saying, well, this is one for discussion, so let's throw it out there. I just I just don't see how anything compares right now to that high school. But I have gone through a lot of schools and seen a lot of problems. Okay, and and problems that should be fixed. I think the billion-dollar deficit in regards to the the maintaining the buildings, it's, I think I heard, a billion and a half is probably closer. And we're trying to add things to it. This isn't something where it's unsafe or it's not something where improvement couldn't be there, no question at all about it. But I'm just, I'm a little bit curious about throwing in new things at this point until we get to the schools that are just falling apart.
And and to be clear, I think the first step would be a design and not go straight into doing anything, but to get a design to figure out what the options are, to do a good assessment of the building, to see what can wait, what what would be preferred to do earlier. It wouldn't be, you can't fix Wayley in in one year, two years, three years. It would be multiple summers of a little bit each summer, but we don't have a plan at all. We have nothing. And and so really, when I when I say the CIP, I think what in in my vision is really an assessment and and design options to come back to the board and say, okay, this is what the building has. We'd like to put something on the bond for design and and assessment, but not the actual work until we can come back with options and then and then look at those outer years. So it certainly wouldn't happen very quickly. But we haven't looked at that. We haven't given that building the same kind of look that we've given many other facilities in the district. And that's that that's really why I I just want to position ourselves to be able to move forward. And I and I think putting the design in and the building assessment is is a good start.
Did you have a follow-up?
Yeah, I just, my word of caution is, when I first got on School Board in 2008, it was, we're going to pick the school most in need and rebuild it and take that type of approach and do everything. And the board pushed away from that. And and I think they did the right thing in saying, wait a minute, we have principals out there saying, don't worry about this because it just adds to our total, so we get a new school. We got so many of those things going on, it was unreal. And right now, trying to say what's everything we can do to it isn't saying what's the problem before we get to a design of what's perfect. I just, I I I don't mind putting money some into reviews like that, but that's money in reviews that could be used to fix something we already know about. And so I have a lot of reservations about trying to go and say, let's find out the perfect school. Just fix the roof, okay? Fix the heating or do the things that we already know about before we get a pin saying, still, we studied the whole school, we're not going to do anything. That's where my concern is at.
Member Jacobs. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. To the the question to administration regarding as to if, you know, board members support, including Wayley and the CIP, I generally do, and I think we need to find a solution. And if that is the option that's most palatable to the experts who draft our CIP annually, I would support it. I am less in, I'm I'm not in support of including an Abbott Loop renovation or or a rebuild in future CIPs. I was looking at the long-term enrollment dashboard that we have in the district. And I know we we hear almost daily at this point that our district has lost enrollment over the last 10 years. I looked at our dashboard, I think a couple of weeks ago, just out of curiosity to examine the the trends, and we we have one that's publicly available. And it I still almost want to double-check the math, but it seems like, according to the dashboard, that we've lost roughly 100 students or so within the last three years, and I think 500 students or so K-12 since October of '21, just a few months after I joined this board. And while that isn't a huge sum, prior boards seemed reticent to address facility rightsizing. And we know that due to a confluence of factors, it's something we need to continue to look at. And so in that environment, I I think it's unwise to take a building that this board has previously chose to implement and approve a long-term plan to dispose of from our portfolio and return to the municipality and take that off the table and have that back into our portfolio to be utilized for another program. And so I think we need to continue having the the conversation about rightsizing. And my hope is that we can partner with local and state leaders to reverse our more than decade-long migration trend and bring families up from the Lower 48 and retain young professionals to ensure that we need to in future years, add second floors to elementary schools around the municipality. But right now, I I can't support reversing a course of action this board has approved multiple times on Abbott Loop. But a Wayley design and renovation does seem reasonable. Thanks. Member Lawson.
Thanks. I wanted to share my support for adding a Wayley design renovation in the next next year CIP. I really appreciated the time that the principal gave me six, eight weeks ago, and walking me through the facility. I was there on a day where there was a plumbing situation. The bathrooms were closed because of the plumbing situation. I believe it houses actually three different programs on the site. There are students like in relos. It is a complex space that serves not just Wayley students, right? But one of the words of the teach, one of the teachers there was, these are all of our students. They are students who are coming into and out of Wayley on an as-needed basis to get the support and direction and and, you know, the wraparound services. And this the facility, there there's no, the principal does not have views of the front of the school, which is something that we're doing in many of our schools. It it is aging, it's showing its age, and I think that safety concerns for students or staff arise when you allow a facility age and condition to continue to degrade, as Republica report about the Sleep Meet School details pretty well. Anyway, so you have my support.
Member Bowlin.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I I wanted to just follow up with Members Lessons and Jacobs. Wayley is kind of the best-kept secret. We don't talk about it. They don't complain. The kids are in a unique, they have unique needs. And for us to not put them in the the CIP, I think would be, especially right now. That member lessons pretty much covered the building and and it's a state of disrepair. Yes, they do a lot of great things over at Wayley in terms of covering up the putting, you know, nice shiny displays up in the hallways, but the kids deserve much better than that. And I I so I would just, I would just, I'd like more conversation. But it seems the most reasonable thing to me is for Wayley to be added to our CIP. I do, and and when it comes to Abbott Loop, I mean, we've already closed Abbott Loop. We made an exception when we put, I I mean, we can't just keep making exceptions for a building that we've already closed. So either we find a in the the Alaska Native Charter a new building by the time they have to come out of the one that they're in. But I but but putting more money into that building, I think, I think that's, I I don't, I can't support that. But for Wayley, we need to talk more about Wayley. We need to make sure that we are giving them, giving that, those teachers and those that population of our students, giving them our best as well, even when we don't hear their voices. So thank you.
Please continue.
Okay, the the last comment, I think we've talked both Wayley and Abbott Loop, and naturally, nothing in a work session is a decision. It just gives me a general feel on the direction forward, and actual decisions naturally are are made at a future date. But the the I did want to point out, and I had a very long discussion with with member, I didn't mean to say it was a very long discussion because it was with Member Higgins, but it did last over an hour. And, you know, he he brought up multiple things that that have been brought up, and we've talked about it in the past. The administration is going to put a significant amount of effort in looking at what are all those repurposed things? You know, this year, when when you focus on school closures, it's all-consuming, like all-consuming. You have board members coming back saying, I don't think those 12 kids will fit at this school because I walked in it and I heard that from a teacher or 20 or 30. And so really, it consumes the staff on nothing but closure. And 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 we really weren't able to put the effort into looking at all the different repurpose options because there's only so many hours in a week. And really, our our focus was a five-month focus to try to close, you know, multiple schools. And and at the end of the day, we we closed two. You know, you look at other districts around the state and and you know, they've been through this process multiple times. I think Fairbanks has gone through three different ways to do it. The first time was five months of community discussions. The second time, they just threw it out in the budget and said, hey, here's our budget, we're closing this school. And they picked a high school on Ileson. And then this year, they said, okay, we're going to have two town halls next week. Here's the three schools, and the week after, we're going to vote on it. So they've certainly made evolutionary changes in the way that they rightsize their district. I think Anchorage is being the largest city. You know, we're we're definitely more public, more prolonged. But ultimately, it it doesn't mean we close more. It just means we we had more public input and and over a much longer period. But but we do need to this summer, and I will put a lot of effort into where can we put other charter schools? And can you can you look co-locate multiple different programs in one building? And, you know, I I suspect early next fall, hopefully, we will have some good recommendations to make that that maybe you don't have to close the school if you can fill every single classroom in the school with a legitimate need. And we'll have to work with DED on how DED tracks school capacity and utilization rates and all those things because the formula that was written 20, 30, 40 years ago, here's your square feet divided by the number of students enrolled in K-5, that formula really doesn't work. And so I did it, I did appreciate, did I say the very long phone call? But it it was great, actually. We 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 had a good conversation, and and we do need to look at all those other areas. So, you know, I'm looking forward to the the next five months or so as we try to figure out really, what do we do with a building that has space to do something amazing that we're just not doing? So that's the end of this brief. Unless there's any additional questions for action tonight, will be a decision, tough call. Four schools vying for two schools, and and I I appreciate how difficult that vote's going to be.
Member Higgins.
Yeah, I'll confirm that it was a very civil kind of, it was a fun conversation, actually, because we were both open about talking about different perspectives of it, and I think we dropped our guards and just shared what was going on. And I appreciate that. There's a lot of aspects of this thing, though. You know, you're you're right, you're a business-focused, and I'm a student-focused. And when I look at ANCCS, and I look at it and say they got 300 and something kids, but they got 100 kids on a waiting list, and they don't have another facility to go to, and it's the only Title I school, and we're the only Alaska Native charter school in the state, that's a concern to me as to how they're going to benefit. They've been through a lot when they were at East High School, and that was a lot. On the other hand, I understand Wilkes-Barre's issues and the financial aspects of it. I will say they're going from a larger school, they're proposing to go to a smaller one. When I look at Detroit here, and I was looking at the sizes, they're at, what, 60, let me find it again real quick, 68,500 square feet, according to this document, which was, which one is it? Just to share, this is the Six Year Capital Improvement Plan. And so I was looking at that 68,000, and I'm looking at the Lakewood is 61,599. So they're going to lose square footage. I'm hearing that they want the school because it can do more things and all that, but it's actually a reduction in size. And while ANCCS is held back on filling their slots because they don't have enough space for them to do. But the other aspect is, I don't know what you take into account, the neighborhood school there, Wilkes-Barre is a great school. I mean, they get, they they do a lot, they, you know, the participation and the support with the parents is just spectacular. It really is, I know that. And I don't disagree about that, but if you move them into Lakewood, the neighborhood kids are not going to be able to join that in third grade when they come in there because you, it's a sequence, you know, it's a growth, a merging program. Alaska Native Charter Schools are more open about that. So there's a little bit of an impact in the local community. There's an impact in regards to growth size that's available there for ANCCS. And I just, that they see, it's the part that we're looking at the students, who's going to get it? And then I did a looked at a comparison that was done by Mike Bonson, and it looked at the growth in third grade. And while Alaska Native Charter Schools is down as far as what level they're at, they're at the top when they look at the growth of that year. And I said, Troy, I want to share with everybody here. And I'm still working with Mike on that one. So I just, it is just, there's no plan right now for ANCCS. If we're not going to rebuild or put in a lot of money into Abbott Loop, and that's something the administration up until recent has been opposed to, then we don't have any option for them. And if we get $1,000 from the from the state with the BSA and they're talking about progression, we told them we would reconsider dropping schools even then if they had done it by February with the ones we'd already selected. So we're kind of giving mixed messages here. We can't be sure, are we going to drop schools? What's going to happen with the funding with the state? You know, this is a, I'd rather play the roulette wheel. At least I got one out of, you know, 35 or whatever it is, chances to win. But but I'm just, I'm looking at it from the kid's standpoint, and I just haven't heard that from the administration as to the results or the benefit, what kids are going to be benefit the most. There's 100 out there waiting to try to get in ANCCS on the waiting list, we knew that. We know that there may be more, there may be different when it's moved in a different area. And they've done pretty good on transportation with court ruling to make it, change that location, and it kept the students. So I guess I'm I'm just, I just want to talk about what students are going to benefit the most. I think that that there's going to be additional funding, I believe, from the state. I don't know if it's going to be 1,000 or not, but it's going to be additional funding. That school, Wilkes-Barre, was built for them. 10 years ago, I was on the board. They came in, they wanted our support to be able to be able to sign a contract for a longer period of time than what they normally could do, and the board agreed to support that. We did. We put out, put it out there to make it happen. So that school was built for them, for that thing. Well, there are problems, yeah, put some dirt back in the backyard. I don't know what the issues or how to fix those. But those things are fixable type issues. So I just, I'm just trying to figure out from the kid's standpoint, you can take 68,500 to 61,500 and you're going to take less less space for a school that wasn't built for them because it's designed differently with less space. I just don't see where, I'm I'm just, the analysis is which kids benefit.
So I can answer some of those questions. We walked through, like we did with all of the schools on the list, where we had notionally picked some charter schools that might occupy. So we walked through Wilkes-Barre or with Wilkes-Barre, we walked through Lakewood. I don't know about how there's space, how much useful space, how much wasted space. I do know that that they're pretty excited that there's more classrooms in Lakewood than what they have. There's a bigger playground, there's, they have a gymnasium but no cafeteria, they have no library, or at least not a very big library, and this is a much bigger library. And when they walked through, they were talking about how much more constructive space there was that supported education, but but I'm the wrong person to answer in detail. I walked through with them. but I'm the wrong person to answer in detail. I walked through with them. I don't know their school the way they know their school. Um, I think that would have to be a discussion with them as to what types of wasted or, or maybe just not very useful space they have in the current facility, but, um, you know, we walked through other schools that ended up not closing with other charter schools. And, you know, we actively did have a plan we couldn't talk about, it was only on paper, but we don't make decisions, um, the board does and, um, you know, the, purely again from a business and, and we ca- we actually um, had a great conversation about disagreeing agreeably or however you said that, it, it worked. The reality is, I, I think Alaska Native Charter School has until at least 2028, whereas Rooka Shula has a lease running out in less than six months. And so when I look at that, I, I, I get it, all your points are valid. At, at the end of tonight, I'm gonna shake two principals' hands and, and congratulate them, whoever they are, on getting a great facility for their school. And then two of them, we're gonna have meetings this week, um, about them not and, and trying to figure out the way ahead. So, I think that's where we're at.
Member Higgins?
Yeah, thank you. I'm gonna pivot to East Anchorage and, when there was the Safer to School Working Group and Collaborative Group with the Anchorage Assembly, what I think I remember was that, the situation for student transportation at Denny Benson is pretty unique because it, um, it crosses, uh, any student who wants to walk to school is across a major transportation corridor. I'm trying to understand if students who are currently zoned for Nunaka, walking to Baxter Elementary, how, do they face the same challenges crossing Northern Lights? It seems to be both can be dangerous roads and it's a concern I have about redrawing those boundaries to include students who maybe have, have to walk across that, um, transportation corridor every day.
Sure, um, so yeah, so the, the answer is that we would likely bus most of the Nunaka students, um, so they wouldn't have to cross that major thoroughfare. Um, and, you know, obviously families will make choices and if they want to walk, we can't, we can't help those choices, but we would provide busing for a majority of the Nunaka students, um, so they wouldn't be crossing Northern Lights as, as a thoroughfare.
Mr. Chair, can I follow up? Um, so I, I, I track that. I just know, you know, when I was going to my elementary school, um, now decades ago, I, I went back to that building aside from the school day. I walked to go to hang out with my friends at the park and went to go play basketball. Those students are going to want to go to Baxter and cross Northern Lights and, and they're going to walk. And tha- that's just extracurricular outside of the normal school day. Um, I think it's fair to assume that there will be some students who want to walk, um, in this new zoning area. And I guess I, I just want an assurance that administration considered this um, because we don't control the traffic patterns on Northern Lights and to the best of my knowledge, this would be a unique school zone that crosses a major transportation corridor. I don't know of another one, but I wouldn't be the person to know that. And so, what sort, I, I also understand that we were trying to be responsive to the community, so I'm not faulting the process. I understand why we, why we ended up where we ended up. I'm just trying to make sure I understand how we weigh the safety aspect with a desire to keep a community together.
You know, it's similar to all the kids going to Baxter now and, and kids walk back and forth across. And especially after hours, kids who live on the other side of Northern Lights go to Baxter to use the playground. I think a lot of the Nunaka Valley kids would continue on weekends and evenings to use their old school playground because we're not gonna close it off. No matter which school we put in Nunaka Valley, it's still a neighborhood playground. It's still a, it's still the heart and soul of where people spend portions of their weekends. So, I, I'd be surprised if someone's a block away from Nunaka Valley, if they would walk all the way to Baxter just because now they go to school there. I think they probably would pick the closest playground and use it. But, um, you know, you brought up a good point and, and we, we need to put in that, that time and the effort with families and talk to them about Northern Lights um, and make sure that months before school opens, um, that, that we've worked through that.
Uh, can I follow up, Mr. Chair? Uh, yes, yeah, thank you. I, I appreciate that logically you, uh, and I would, I would hope that students will go to the nearest school. Um, I can just tell you, if I could channel my inner fourth grader, I could tell you that that is a, a, does not reality, um, for at least some students. With that said, I, I appreciate that administration is willing to um, engage in extra collaborative work with the community to make sure that students are safe. I'm gonna pivot to transportation. Um, and I, I am not trying to, uh, the horse is still alive, so I'm not trying to uh, continue to poke it in a live horse, um, is how I'm gonna phrase it. Um, but I am interested in hearing, um, the conversations that administration had with any and all of the four programs regarding the language that the board included in our right-sizing memo that we approved 1217 regarding collaborative work to spin up, um, transportation for the first time in a, in a meaningful but albeit, um, small way for programs. What does that look like? How have the programs been receiving those conversations? What do we think it looks like next year?
So we have looked at internally, can we do a couple hub-and-spoke pilots? Because we don't know that we're gonna have additional bus drivers or not, so we're trying to do it as, as efficiently as possible. We, we haven't engaged in what the contract looks like if the board says yes, because unfortunately, the more I work with a school, the more there's the perception that, that, that decision has been made and it becomes emotional and complicated later. And, and sometimes just walking through, you know, a, a school with a potential new occupier, if, if a school closes, you know, we had to do those on weekends, but we didn't want to give the perception, knowing that the board wanted to wait until March. We didn't want to give the perception that we were going forward with a plan for each school and work out the dollar amounts when we, you know, we, we put a lot of schools up on the list this year and we closed two. And, and we're down now to four schools, think, hoping that they get it. And, and so, how many hundreds of hours more do you spend with those schools? Getting them to go to their APC with a contract, i- i- it just, when you put the decision, when you segregate and completely separate school closure and repurposing, it, it delays a lot of things. I mean, we're 10 weeks from today. We're physically gonna be delivering about 7,500 boxes to somebody and we don't know who. And, and so there's a lot of details that we've gotta work out and, you know, the hard work starts. We've done a lot of the prep, we've got a lot of the conceptual stuff down, we've got a lot for, um, you know, the two schools are closing and then the gaining schools. We've worked a lot, but with the charter schools, you just can't pull the one principal and, and start doing all that detailed work when you, they have, nobody, nobody knows what the decision will be.
Mr. Chair, could I ask one last follow-up?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Um, appreciate that, Mr. Anderson. Um, I think my last question will be, and I understand, um, I don't dispute that answer, disagree with that answer, I think that's unreasonable. Um, I think my underlying concern and the, the inquiry I have is, is there any risk that, or have you, um, through conversations you have had, um, with the programs, do you foresee there being any, um, opportunity for a program to say, we aren't interested in collaborating? We aren't interested in facilitating a, a collaborative agreement regarding transportation? Um, is this something we're going to have to navigate with a program that isn't collaborative after we've made a decision tonight?
I, I really don't see it being a problem with the principles that I, that, that we've specifically talked about it. Three of the four schools, I think everyone knows, I mean, uh, board meetings this year have probably been followed closer than at any time in the last 10 years by at least half a dozen schools or more. Um, I, I don't see any pushback. I think what they don't know is how do I sign up when I don't know how much it's gonna be? And I don't know what to tell them. Because we, we've got to finalize the plan and we're not gonna break a school. If, if all of a sudden you're, I mean, do you go to Highland and say, well, your share is 176,000 and that is your fund balance? Um, you, you just can't have those discussions without knowing who's gonna move in.
Member Higgins?
Yeah, yeah, um, the Stream and the Highland is the one that bothers me the most, okay? I feel like I'm gonna apologize to one. Uh, both of them I go by and visit and you got the parking lot being used for gym. Uh, it's, it, th- this school, when I walk in it, I keep thinking to myself, I remember when that was Payless and it hasn't changed a whole lot. It's like a warehouse kind of place, it's divided some walls for classes, but that's about it. Uh, both those schools do good with differentiated instructions. When kids are ready for higher educational type thing, they move them up, they get, make sure they get challenged. I like that better. Uh, and I see that with some other schools as well and I think they do a good job with that and I appreciate that. But what I'm looking at too is saying, okay, you got Stream that has over 100 people trying to get in, you don't know what, how that's gonna play out. You got Highland doesn't and that school is much bigger, um, you know, than what either one of them have. I look at Highland Academy and I'm looking at $500,000 for theirs, which has uh, less than a third of the space that Rooka Shula has and they're paying only, they're paying 75% of what Rooka Shula pays. And I'm keeping to myself, what are the other options here to find someplace else other than subleasing from us and making them pay through the, you know, pay really rough? Or there, have we looked at any other options for Highland Tech other than a windowless warehouse cut up into offices with no space for that kind of money?
I'm unaware of anything where we worked with Highland to sort of, try to find them a new facility. I'm unaware of them looking for a new facility. And I don't think it's been brought up by Highland or the, or anybody, oth- other than right now. I mean, obviously, we, we knew that if we could get Highland in a better educational space, they would have a great chance to grow. Right now, they're in a space that doesn't. If you go in when they eat lunch and you walk in the door and you go over to the left, that hallway is what, maybe 12 feet wide, maybe?
Yeah.
That's their lunchroom, it's maybe 12 feet wide and it's, it's really awkward. But you know, like a, a lot of our charter schools, they, they got used to the space they had and they focused on the kids and, and we didn't look for other opportunities. Um, I will tell you that, that, um, we look at, Stream was at the top of the list, Alaska Native, Rooka Shula, um, and Highland when on the list of schools that we recommended closure. Um, and, and we recognize that those schools could all benefit. And again, I, I mean, I, we'll probably be both standing side by side apologizing to somebody because someone's in a space that's not as good as someone else is gonna get. And I, you know, I don't know how to fix that. When you look at the cost of s- uh, cost of leases across Anchorage, there's a lot more open space, vacant space than there used to be, but they're ch- still charging an arm and a leg, um, for the space that's there. So, you know, depending on, on how the vote goes, I'm sure I'll be talking to principals who didn't get what they wanted and, and trying to see if they need our help to try to find a better place or to figure out something on the way ahead. I think though, you know, Alaska Native Charter Schools got till 28. Obviously I can work with the fire marshal if, if it goes that way. Um, I mean, starting tomorrow, Kirsten and I are gonna be linking up probably first with the people that need the most help from us. Um, and then with the people that, that we've got 10 weeks to get boxes delivered.
If we're not committed to really fixing up Abbott Loop, I don't suspect we're gonna get indefinite extensions, right? I mean, that's really what it comes down to. And we're just wavering and somebody gets hurt because they don't do the fire suppression changes with the new code, even though I don't think that's a tremendous risk right now at all. But we still, they have the obligation to enforce the code because there were, the codes are there for safety. I had not thought about walking the school issue and I, um, uh, agree, that's a legitimate safety concern as well. But every one of our charter schools are not in a institutional constructed school. So every one of our charter schools are gonna have equal need for that. So I don't see that. And I do agree, and we had quite a discussion about right sizing can be more about closing schools. It can be fully utilized in those schools. We have community needs for preschool. We have community, we, there's no reason why we can't work more with the charter schools on, on utilizing these schools, family school partnership. I know they want it, they want to be aware near a school like they're gonna catch something, but all of them can have some benefit, but if they were in located in three or four different schools, it would actually help them. Uh, so I just see that as, we, we can do better is what I'm shooting for.
Member Jacobs?
Yeah, um, so, um, please correct me if I'm wrong. We receive, i- is it $5 million from, um, annually? What, what is the, the sublease cost that we receive from Highland, um, annually?
Oh, Andy left, dang it. He's at the assembly meeting, um, talking about our budget. I think it's five, it's less than, I think it's less than 500,000. Um, I had it on the chart and of course I closed my laptop. 5:05.
Okay, um, so, is the, i- if, if the, if the, the memorandum is approved as drafted, that opens up an additional hole in our FY26 budget? And is that offset by leases, lease costs that we'd be saving with the ACT program? What, how do we fill that gap?
So, there's, there's a couple ways to fill it. One is we no longer have, would have to pay the leases that we've been paying on the ACT program that are budgeted in and that shift closes that hole, um, quite a bit. Realistically, although we wouldn't do it this year, you know, there's a very good partner for Highland Tech if they're the ones chosen. And, you know, a, a year from now, um, or a year and 11 weeks from now, we could easily be moving family partnership over to Highland because a lot of those kids um, would benefit from having families share that facility. And I know that wasn't part of the right size or repurposing plan, but obviously we've looked at multiple different options and then you're saving another $300,000. So ultimately, yes, you can save more money, district money, non-charter school money, within the next couple of years by putting Highland Tech in there. But, but that potential to put family there, um, wasn't brought on the table because it, it really was between those two schools. Um, initially, but long-term, I think we can gain even more savings by, um, co-locating family. And at, it easily fit, they don't take a lot of space. And it would give another option to those kids going to Highland that they, they currently don't have and they're the most likely of the charter schools to take advantage of those opportunities for credit recovery and everything else.
I follow up, Mr. Chair. Um, so I appreciate that. I, I think just a follow-up comment, uh, to the, you know, to the question of what we tell, um, any program that, that is still awaiting certainty and potentially is interested in utilizing an ASD facility to reduce their overhead costs. You know, I think the board has committed to continuing the conversation and we did it on 1217. And I recognize that that's an ask from staff. I'm also grateful that we are committed to consider co-location options as we go forward. I'm excited at how that possibility unfolds. And so, um, tonight is a decision point, but I don't think it's a, uh, it, it won't be, it can't be an end to the, this conversation. And so, uh, this is the first chapter. And so, uh, whether, um, it's tonight or this fall, um, I anticipate it's not a question of, um, if we assist these other programs, it's a matter of when. So, thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you. Um, just, just a point of clarification, uh, with Member Higgins. Um, the lease agreement at Rooki, their current building is listed at 39,000 square feet, but 39,000 square feet. Um, so I'm not sure if there's a typo in the document that you were referencing or, or where the error is. Um, but I just wanted to bring that as a point of clarification.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll run that down, Member Higgins. But the lease document is 39,500. So, we'll run it down. Uh, all I know is the principal and AP said, this is, this has got more room and I, I believed them.
Any other questions from board members? And I'm not sure who, uh, or a question to the superintendent, do we have an agenda for a executive session tonight?
There are no agenda items, Mr. President.
Awesome. In that case, if anyone has more questions, we have time. Uh, if not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the work session. Is there a second? Oh, okay. I, I want a second. Moved and seconded to adjourn, uh, this work session is adjourned. Oh, okay, I want a second. Moved and seconded to adjourn, this work session is adjourned.